Best chance of success. I think so too. We don't be so... We're so... I think both of us are seriously... We should not have been... This is... The truth. We need to try and say... Can't we use... He's getting up to the front line right there for... Right ahead. He's getting released right now. Right in the face. At least one of them can try to control some of the rest. Like number... No, it's two. Say something small here. Still not a problem.
If I... There's some work... I sense we should just... Right here. Number eight. House of Representatives. Just got four five eighty-seven. That's it. Just going down. It's safe. I assume it's good for children.
Well, audience, I'd just like to thank the Knight Hawks. And that's five, by the way. Don't check my math. For a little prelude to this evening's meeting. In fact, I believe after we get our meeting started, they're going to share another piece or so with us. Let me introduce them while we're right before our meeting begins. First of all, they're under the direction of Allison O'Fray. Thank you, Allison. Wonderful job. And few members would like to raise your hand. I'll read your names. Denise Morales Rodriguez. And then Jennifer Dunn. Jennifer Lara. Amy Rita. Or... Reader, I'm sorry. And Nina Patuzzo. And my new best friend, Will Ladd on base. Okay.
I'd like to call this December 17th meeting of the Board of Education to order. Roll call.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Here.
Mr. Fruman.
Here.
Mrs. Hubner.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Dr. Heitz.
Here.
Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everyone for coming and for our... Before our safety briefing, which obviously has renewed importance. And we're all aware of the things that happened on Friday. And, I mean, unspeakable things. And we'll discuss it a little later on in this meeting. But if you'd all join me for a moment of silence for the parents in the district up in Newtown. Thank you. For our safety briefing, we do have three exits... Or four exits. Three off to your right. We have one back here on the... To my right. We do have a resource officer in the back too that will help us in any way that needs to be in that unlikely event of any problems. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heitz.
Yes. Now on to happier things.
Yes.
Dr. Jackson.
Allison, would you like to introduce?
And the next song.
Yes. This is the Knight Hawk Court. They've been together now since the second year. They were first basically once a week. And they're going to play for me a piece called Lady Gaga Game. And the telling composer Giovanni Torri played a little piece of bad romance and he turned it into a horror movie. You can try.
And again, thank you so much. The Christmas holiday music prior to our board meeting. And that piece was just wonderful. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Could we have, before the parents leave, the parents stand up and be recognized for what wonderful musicians they have?
I'm sorry, that was a fun...
Yeah.
Well, it was.
Okay, on to the minutes. Have I had a chance to review the minutes from last meeting?
Yes.
All right. Can I get a motion to approve?
Move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Dr. Heitz.
Yes. On to correspondence.
Were those the only minutes that needed to be approved?
Policy committee minutes.
The policy was just today.
We just met today.
Okay.
There were some minutes from a policy committee meeting in there, weren't there?
No, I guess we're good. Sorry.
That was just... On the agenda.
Okay, go ahead. Sorry.
Okay. Do we have any correspondence for the treasurer superintendent?
Actually, we do. In fact, it's hot off the presses yet this afternoon. I would like to share with the board and to the members of the audience and our community that received information today that our final audit report was released. Actually, we kind of got a little tip to this a few days ago when we met for the final audit review. But it is official. And I share with you from the state auditor's office that the state auditor is pleased to communicate that the district received an excellent, clean audit report. Squeaky clean, by the way. And there were no citations or management recommendations issued by the state. The support from the Board of Education, the compliance efforts from all district staff are greatly appreciated. I'd like to congratulate Rick Tepper, our treasurer, and his great staff for, again, doing a wonderful job and another fine, clean report.
Excellent.
Always impressive.
That is always, yes. It's always good news. It's almost expected at this point. But we do appreciate the hard work that goes into creating...
And again, really... And again, this community, this school district, is indeed fortunate. Very rarely, I mean very rarely, does a treasurer's office receive squeaky clean audit reports year in and year out. Because, first of all, I think what auditor's job is to do is to make sure that they uncover everything they can and look and check on a lot of the different issues. But at the same time, you know, there's bound to be something, somewhere, you would think, that, you know, just had a little bit of a recommendation even. Well, maybe next year if you do it this way. We don't get those. So, you know, again, that is indeed a great, great honor. Great feat. Thank you.
Last year, a state auditor, Yoast, came down and presented, our treasurer, with an award. Because, as you said, getting an audit with no citations, no recommendations whatsoever, is very rare. And for somebody to get it year after year after year, I guess in this community we kind of expect that. But nevertheless, it's truly an outstanding accomplishment. Congratulations.
Thank you. I... If you're going to say all that, I need to at least thank... I have a great staff. And I would say all the people in the district that helped make this possible. I mean, it's a lot of dirty work to do. But one person that I wanted to thank is someone you won't see at these meetings. Behind the scenes, Jenny Benassi. She's... Makes it go. We've had, just in the last three years, you know, major changes in the way we do business, major benefit changes, retirement of two or three 25-year folks. Crazy federal programs that we're told to manage that can't by their own rules be managed. And she makes it go. So special thanks to her. She's kind of the day-to-day. We meet and she makes it happen. So I really appreciate her and all the efforts of everybody. Thank you.
Great. Next up is procedures for public commentary. The regular meetings of the Board of Education, not public meetings, but meetings held in public. However, we do welcome your comments. If you would like to address the board, we have green cards up at the front. And we will call you when we get to that point in the agenda. Now again, the highlight of the meetings, candidate for graduation. Mr. Broadwater.
Well, Mr. Broadwater, is that actually a meeting, a concert as such at Anderson? It's going to be just a little late, so you have to stand in. So, Board of Education, I am so pleased. And this is what we're all about. And that is, the following student has completed all requirements for diploma from Anderson High School. And that student's name is Kayla Dawn McCarthy. Kayla, are you here? Gee, Kayla, you get a receiver from the superintendent. Congratulations. Now, Kayla, before this is official though, I have to recommend, or the superintendent recommends to the Board of Education that you approve, Board, the granting of the high school diploma to Kayla McCarthy.
So move with pleasure.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Dr. Heitz.
Yes.
And Kayla, we all know that although you did all the hard work and you are getting diploma, I know that you have some family members that are here that have supported you along the way. So family, would you please stand? Congratulations again. And not that you wouldn't want to stay for the entire meeting, but you've got what you earned. And you can... You're welcome to go. You are welcome.
Congratulations.
Congratulations again. You have a large, proud family. Next up, election of a president pro tem for the organizational meeting.
I move.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, go ahead. Sorry.
Oh, thank you. I moved that Forrest Heitz be our president pro tem for the organizational meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tepper.
Mrs. Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner.
Yes.
Dr. Heitz.
Yes. All right. Now as to the... We're to public commentary. No cards? All right. District updates from the superintendent.
Yes, it's been a very busy weekend. And I did want to say, first of all, our... As a district, and of course, this is happening across our country, but our thoughts and our prayers go out to, as you had said, Dr. Heitz, to the families, the school officials, the entire... the entire school, and the district, Sandy Hook Elementary School, and Newtown, Connecticut. I did want to update the board and just share, since that, of course, it's on everybody's mind, of course, the media has kind of kept it in front of us. And as a district, I just wanted to share the fact that I'm pleased that several of us got together yesterday afternoon on a Sunday, and we talked about some of the issues that we may be facing today with kids coming and having questions, and parents' calls, and those types of things. So, we met, we put together a plan. Yesterday, I sent out a memorandum to all of our community in regards to just kind of assuring them of the safety that we do have in place, that our buildings are secure, our staff is trained. We do have safety plans in each of our buildings. Those plans are updated on a regular basis. We have a safety committee in this district, bar none, that Julie sets on, and that involves parents, community members, students, teachers, administrators, officials from our, both Newtown and Anderson Township Fire, and also our police and sheriff's office from those areas. And we meet and we talk about safety. We take it very seriously. We're going to hear a little bit later on today, this evening, a little bit more about safety as we move on. But I did want to share that. And then, again, thanks to our administrators for coming in very early this morning, where we met as a group, and we talked about a plan, and then going through that today. And I know that they did a wonderful job. I've gotten some reports back from a couple of them, that it was a fairly quiet day, and that was good. We shared with our community, as I shared with our, and our staff, some materials that we have found in regards to talking to students, talking to parents. And we have made available counselors and other people from our district in case our students and our parents and community would like to talk and share. So, it's a quick update in regards to that. As we move along, just a couple other updates to the board in regards to a few weeks, a couple, a few weeks back, I put out online a, and again communicated with our community, a survey that I would appreciate as many people taking as possible. And that survey is going to help us move forward with planning in the future, in particular, asking some questions in regards to what does our community, our teachers, our students truly believe sets us apart as a school district, as one of the quality school districts in the state, so that I can design a report for our community that is regarding the Forest Hills School District that will coincide with the state report card as well. And with that, just another quick update. Last Saturday, we were very pleased that we had our first ACT as a testing site in our district. We did that many years ago, and got away from it, and we're back. And of the several hundred students from this area that attended on Saturday, 80-plus percent were ours. So, I think that gives us a little bit of a hometown advantage, as well as the fact that we have three more testing dates, I believe, set for the remainder of the year for ACT. Is that correct, Connie, three more? Okay. And we're working to get SAT site here as well. So, just as a quick update to the board, a lot of great things going on. And one last, if I, Connie, you might be able to help me out on this, and if I didn't bring that information, is that next year, we're offering a new dual-credit blended course. And that course will be aligned with requirements from the University of Cincinnati for credit, college credit for students, particularly at the junior and senior level, or, okay, thank you, Connie. And that will be on financial literacy. So, we're pleased to move forward with that. This will be our third dual-credit, and really, our first blended learning course. Thank you.
So, what is a blended course?
Blended is that they would be taking, they'll have instruction as if they, you know, from our instructors, and they'll also have some requirements that they'll have to do online.
Okay. All right. Next up, curriculum. Connie?
While she's walking off, I just want to make a quick comment. It's really exciting, the dual enrollment, because every time we go to some of these presentations, they talk about that being the future. And that's the way really aggressive school districts are going. And so, I want to applaud the work, because I know it's not easy, and there's a lot of extra work involved in that. But that is, it's really exciting. It's one more opportunity that Forest Hills can deliver to our community. So, I really thank you for the extra effort that it took to put those in place.
And I would then thank Connie and Rick, the department of work.
And I would expand that to Mrs. Preston. And I, I think it's great now that we have a strong relationship with UC. We'll be able to continue to offer more things for our students.
Thank you.
Okay. We are asking that the board recommend to the Ohio Department of Education a waiver request asking for four hours of instructional time to be used for professional development for this school year, and also for 2013-14, for our two-hour late starts, one hour for each of the four late starts. This application relates to ORC 3313.48 minimum school year, which allows for a waiver of up to a total of 24 instructional hours. And all the supporting documents are attachments for your review.
So, moved. Second.
Mr. Teffer?
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Heis?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
All right. Next up, human resources. Stan?
Good evening. On your human resources report this evening, we have a number of items. Items A and B are resignations. Looking at item C, it is, these are change of assignments. Item D, we do have appointments. And I'm going to start out with our first appointment, being an administrator who we would like to welcome to Forest Hills this evening. We, I, the superintendent is asking you to approve Robert, or Rob, Fellows as the assistant principal for a term beginning January 22, 2013, and ending July 31, 2014, as the Wilson Assistant Principal. This comes as a result of Dr. Roberts, who will be retiring at the end of January. Her assistant, Mr. Buck, will be moved, of course, by your approval from last month, to the principalship. And so, we were able to take a review of over 30 applications that we received, went through a very extensive process of interviewing, vetting our candidates, and we're very pleased to present to you Mr. Rob Fellows tonight. So, Rob, can you stand for just a moment? And with Rob this evening, we have his wife, Ellen. So, hi, Ellen. Rob is a hometown boy. He's a Cincinnati, he was raised, or born here in Cincinnati, moved to Indiana, you know, a little bit later in his childhood, but he has found his way back home. And he is very excited, and I believe his parents are also very excited that he has found his way back home. So, an Indiana grad, and also butler. And let's see, didn't Indiana and Butler just play? So, so, welcome, Rob. We're very pleased to have you aboard. Moving on, teaching staff. We see Elizabeth Mulray, Susan Black as classified staff, as an instructional aide at Maddox, Melanie Chamberlain, also an instructional aide at Maddox, Rebecca Reynolds, a paraprofessional at Wilson, Alexis Weaver, also an instructional aide at Maddox, and Tamperlin Carroll, our food services secretary, who will begin after the first of the year for us. Moving on, we have additional classified staff, special services appointments. I'm going to just give you a moment to look through those items in F, work beyond contract, additional support, destination imagination. And this is another program that is being funded by the Forest Hills Foundation for Education. We're always very, very pleased to partner with the foundation. This is a great opportunity for our students to extend their learning, a great opportunity for our staff to be a part of this. It's just a wonderful, a wonderful program. Scoreboard operator. Moving on, we see marching band, some athletic game manager, ticket takers, announcers, some drama. Moving on to item G, here we have our coaches and advisors. I'll give you just a moment to look through those. Item G, substitute personnel. I'm sorry, that should be item H, substitute personnel. And our FTE, since the board meeting of November 19, staffing in the district has increased by 2.30 FTE to 768.65. I would note that 1.68 of these additional FTE are the three part-time math instructional aides that we're asking you to approve this evening. There's also a, an additional .44 that is going to be a federally funded program. And then, .18 of that FTE, the final .18, are some adjustments in the bus routes. So, the superintendent does recommend that the board approve the human resources report as presented.
So, moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Yeah, I bet. You provided a good summary of, of the increase in the FTE, and that some of this is paid for with Title I funds, but I've got a bigger concern about the work beyond contract that we continue to approve each month. We've had some discussion on that, and I understand there's going to be some plan in place to, to look at more carefully. Is that right?
That's correct. We are actually in process right now of taking a look at all of our extra work, the work beyond the contract. They're paid with something here internally we call 202s. So, taking a look at all of those 202s, we've asked every building and every department to identify what they typically would write a 202, or what we would pay for extra work. As we've identified those, we're also going back and looking at old agendas to make sure that we have a comprehensive list, because we feel like we, in order to know what is, what are the appropriate 202s or extra work to pay, we need to know what those are. And so, we're in that process of identifying those at this point. And then, we're starting to have a little bit of conversation internally within the departments, and less at the building level now, but right now with departments. And I anticipate that as we move forward into the 13-14 school year, I think we'll have a tighter, I believe we'll have a tighter grasp on that in terms of just what is going to be a part of a regular, a person's regular position, and what is something that's going to be paid additionally for.
When you say tighter grasp, does that mean a way to measure that, so that we can then look at changes as the year goes along?
Yes. We, I know the treasurer's office kind of maintains a little bit of an idea at this point, or they've started to recently, of what those extra pays are. And so, we're going to be able to take a look at the, in the future, and sort of use that as a benchmark for where we are in terms of making a decision whether we're making progress toward our goals.
Thank you.
Mr. Teffer?
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Dr. Heis?
Yes. Thank you, Tammy. Next up, business operations. Red?
Before I get started, there's an addition or a change in the contract, delayed attachment number five. I think it replaces, that replaces the one that's in the original agreement. We just got that late this afternoon.
I bring to you a motion to approve the agreement with Pet Canaford and Briggs Service Corporation for HVAC and refrigeration maintenance services effective January 1, 2013, through June 30, 2017, as presented. This is actually the endpoint of a long process. We've been working on this for about a year. We negotiated a service contract, taking a larger book of business, not only our needs, but as well as that of the Merrimott City School District. We were kind of delayed because they've gone through a building project, and so we had to make sure we had the complete inventory of all the equipment they were bringing online. But as a result of this, we know that we're going to be saving over the term of the contract a minimum of $100,000 in preventive maintenance costs, as well as we've added a lot of equipment to the list of what's going to be maintained, and still generate those savings. I'm just here to present this, the hard work behind this, what goes to, is a result of Brad Moats and, with Moats Engineering, and Bob Vanderwood. They did all the grunt work on this, and we're going to benefit from it. It's recommended that the board approve the agreement with Pet Canaford and Briggs Service Corporation for HVAC and refrigeration maintenance services effective 1-1, 2013, through June 30, 2017, as presented.
So, moved.
Second.
Discussion?
As I recall, this is like a 24-page agreement.
And I spent a little time looking at it and took most of my comfort from the fact that Bronston Accords happened and all.
Yeah, they actually had two attorneys from there because, because of how long it was, so.
And obviously, you would be bringing in a few more.
There were revisions, too. I mean, it didn't just flow through.
Okay.
Well, and another advantage is that Bronston serves both school districts, so he reviewed one agreement, and we split the cost of that, so.
All right. Mr. Teffer?
Mr. Frumman?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Dr. Heis?
Yes. Next up, treasurer, five-year financial forecast?
We're required by law to bring this twice a year, October and May, and those are filed those, those months. The current five-year forecast was approved in September, and that is what's currently on the OD website. We typically bring a revision in December, or any other time there's changes made. But every December, we receive the updated tax revenue information that is available down, with Hamilton County. So, we go and record that information and kind of run it through, especially with a lot of uncertainty as to what impact that will have moving forward. So, the forecast that we have in front tonight has been updated. I summarized these in the report I sent to the board, but it's not a lot of overall changes, but we did update the tax revenue. State funding, no change. Our tax increment financing revenue has been updated. So, overall, our revenues over five years increased, you know, by .19%. Our expenditures, we have actual numbers with our current staffing, as well as updated hiring, acceptance of benefits, our dental and life adjustments have been made, small changes in similar purchase services. So, overall, expenditures over five years have decreased by .11%. So, kind of a summary overall, the forecast still projects a positive cash balance through fiscal year 15, 16. That is the, the third, the third year of a positive cash balance that we communicated to our community would be the minimum that the March 2012 operating levy would generate. So, positive years in 14, 15, and 16 are those three committed years that, as I said, we communicated to our, our community. The interesting part is we're very close to a fourth year, and as I say, close and reachable at adding a fourth year, and be well on our way to more as we continue to do some of the things that Ray's mentioned, and a lot of other things that are going on in the district to continue to become more efficient. So, not a lot of overall change, but you can see we've trimmed that fourth year down to something even smaller, and something that I'm very confident will, will be reached. In addition to that, I've given you the 12 or 14 pages of assumptions that kind of back that up, small changes, as I said, to the revenue that we received. So, it's recommended the board approve the revised forecast, fiscal years 13 through 17, as listed in 13.1 of the agenda.
So, moved.
Second.
Discussion? Mr. Teffer?
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Frumman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Dr. Heis?
Yes.
And 13.2, our financial report for this month. I'll run through these briefly. Donations are listed in A for November, and significant donations, over $34,000. I'll mention a couple of the big ones, but our Wilson PTA, laptops, and a lot of other things, over almost $13,000. Donation for one of our community members, Mark and Kimberly Air, $10,673.37 for playground equipment for early childhood program at Summit. So, it was very nice to get that checked. Obviously, there's lots more lists on the agenda, but our community supports public education, and you can see it there. In B, we have a statement of board accounts. All board accounts are positive and in good condition. Our general fund receipts, 47.51% of projected revenue is received. It's a little bit lower, but those changes have been incorporated in the forecast. Keep in mind that what we're Keep in mind that what we're able to show is what the county will allow us to appropriate, so that's different than the five-year forecast. The five-year forecast is the bible that we use, but the spending plan that the county has is a little different, a little more conservative. In item D, we have the general fund expenditures by function, so 44.45% of our appropriations have been spent or encumbered. And in E, you see that we're a little bit higher than a three-year average at this time. As I said, we have tightened for the last three or four years, so appropriations are a little tighter this year than ever before, so I don't anticipate that being a big problem. But once again, those have been built into the forecast that was just approved. F is our monthly bank reconciliation. G is investments. H, we've increased appropriations for five funds. No change to our general fund, but we did amend appropriations for those other five funds based on revenue projections that we received this month. In item I, we're asking the board to approve board service fund expenses for meeting and seminar expenses that are listed. Item J, we're asking the board to approve fiscal year 12 projects, moving, transferring funds from last year's projects to this year's projects. And then two quick updates, we did meet, the business advisory committee meeting was held on December 3rd, and Ray in Dallas were there as well, and we shared some of the information that we presented tonight to the board, ran through some information and got some good feedback as well. So that was on 12-3. And also at your place is the 13-14 tax budget, a handout, a packet of information. This will be part of what we'll ask the board to approve at the organizational meeting on the 4th of January. This information is on our website, and by law, it's now available for public viewing, so it's available in my office as well as anybody that wants to see it online. And there'll be a brief hearing on the 4th and approval of that tax budget at that time. It's recommended the board approve the treasurer's report as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Tepper?
Mr. Fruman?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissinger?
Yes.
Mrs. Hubner?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Dr. Heis?
Yes.
Next up, board discussion. Dr. Jackson?
Yes, thank you. This evening, I'd like to share with the Board of Education the Forest Hill School District Facilities Plan. Now, I start with that because over two years ago, when I was hired as superintendent of schools, one of the areas that the board asked me to address or take a look at, or at least a need in the district, was facilities. And with the work at hand, the first thing we did, of course, was create a strategic plan for the district. And in that plan, and I'll address here in a moment, one of the goals of that plan in particular was to address the facilities. So for the past several months, I've been working with a steering committee that I've put together, a superintendent steering committee that has actually taken a look at the facilities and has helped put together the plan that I'm sharing with you this evening. The first thing we did, however, is we took a look at what is a vision? What is our vision? What did we want to accomplish? And the vision that shows here is that we wanted facilities that support success for all of our students now and in our future. We also created a mission statement. That mission statement is to provide safe, secure, and optimal learning environments that enable our students to acquire the knowledge, skills, and personal qualities necessary for responsible citizenship and lifelong learning. We emphasize safe, secure, and optimal learning environments. As I stated, our strategic plan that was adopted by the board last February had five goals. One of those goals specifically, goal number three, was to develop a facilities master plan that addresses the future, or current and future educational needs. Now, along the side there, you'll see two key initiatives. Those two key initiatives are, number one, was to address our current facilities and infrastructure to optimize our learning spaces. And number two, one of those initiatives was to plan for our future learning environment. So that was the premise of our strategic plan for facilities. I'd like to talk just a minute about the process. As I said, I created a steering committee several months ago that consisted of a board member. It also consisted of our district treasurer, director of business operations, facility planning consultants, which I have one here today, Joe Kunkel from SSOE. Joe, thank you. If you have any questions later, Joe's the guy to ask? No. As well as community members that represented a variety of different expertise in our community. So the rest of the process is this. The steering committee reviewed the previous facility studies that have been shared with the board over the past several years. We toured the facilities to get a really firsthand, in-depth look at our facilities. We gathered and analyzed the data from our tours, from the studies, and from our consultants, and assisted in designing this particular facility's plan. We focused on identifying facility needs that would support our current and future educational programs, including the infrastructure we're building, space and learning environments. As the work progressed, beyond the gathering of data and analyzing that data, the committee began focusing on developing this plan to be presented tonight to the board. And then upon approval of this plan, the community has, will, can help to communicate the needs of our facilities improvements to our district's constituency. As we move on, as we, as the steering committee began to look at our district facilities, we honed in on specific needs of our facilities. The needs, not wants, but needs that we, that are critical needs of our district. The very first thing was we needed to address safety and security modifications at every one of our buildings. We do a wonderful job in keeping our staff and our students secure. And our facilities are in pretty good condition in regards to that, but there definitely are improvements that need to be addressed as we move forward. A second critical need that the committee discovered was that all of our buildings needed to be accessible to all of our students, our staff, and our community. What we discovered that many of our facilities were not accessible to everyone. In fact, if a student became injured, and either wheelchair-bound or crutches-bound, there were places in some, many of our buildings where students could not get. So, or if you had a handicap already, then we had to, you never had an opportunity to visit any of the classrooms on certain floors or in certain other places of our buildings. So many times when we talked to our building administrators, the steering committee, they shared stories in regards to, well, we had so-and-so in this particular classroom where we literally had to pack up that classroom from a second floor and move it to a first floor, and then trade places with the first floor classroom up to the second floor because of the inabilities for our students to assess different parts of our buildings. We also began to discover that there was definitely a need to optimize our learning environments. And there was a fourth critical assessment that we found, that our building envelopes are very structurally and functionally sound. What does that mean? Structurally sound means, thanks to the board's foresight many years ago, to invest in our facilities through some PI monies that we were fortunate to be able to have due to interest income and moving some of the general fund monies into a quote PI fund, we have done a nice, an excellent job in maintaining the envelopes of our buildings. What is an envelope? Simply that. It's the walls, it's the ceilings, it's the roofs, it's the windows, it's the tuck pointing. It's keeping those buildings in very good condition. But what we also discovered, that we have one building in particular, and that's Wilson Elementary, that basically has a much lesser degree, to put mildly, lesser degree of functionality and sustainability. I think if you have an opportunity, and I know all the board, again, part of my job this summer was to take the board around, which, thank you, to have a tour of all of our facilities as well. So that was our critical findings of the committee right up front. So our plan really focused around those particular critical findings. The steering committee also came up with some critical, what we call, assumptions. And those assumptions basically were developed from discussions with other individuals, from data that I provided, from some several surveys and discussions that I've had with community over the past couple of years, and my conversations in our coffees. And just basically because they are community members of our district, of what they were hearing in the district as well. And so the critical assumptions, we narrowed it down to four. Number one, critical assumption that this committee worked on was simply that there would be no change in our building configurations, that we would maintain two high schools, one middle school, and six elementary schools, as the board even well over a year ago had said that that's what we do. This steering committee championed that as well. Number two, another critical assumption is that we will maintain neighborhood schools with no change of grade level configurations. So we believe, and we feel, and as a committee believe, that neighborhood schools are deeply important to our community. Number three, critical assumption, that there be no significant change in student enrollment in the foreseeable future. When we looked at that data, and we looked at that past, and when we talked in regards to what's available for growth in our district, and it is very little, that we truly believe that for the next several years, we're going to hover around that 75, 7600 mark of students for the next several years. And the fourth critical assumption, for lots of reasons, number one, probably because we all believe that we have a very conservative community, and our economic times are as such that we need to be conservative, that the fourth critical assumption was that our facilities plans must be needs-based, a long-term plan, and a cost-effective plan. Now, let's look at that for a moment. Needs-based means simply that. What are our needs as we move forward? What do we have to begin to address? That we can't simply begin to keep taking out of the general fund to address long-term. That's what makes this plan, I think, different than anything else that may have been presented to the Board of Education, is the long-termness of this particular plan. In fact, when the steering committee began looking at putting a plan together, we began looking at maybe a two, maybe a three-phase plan, a plan that these are the critical needs that we have today, and then, you know, five or six down, seven, eight years down the road, we go to a phase two and we'd address this, and then maybe down the road, we go to a phase three and address that. But as we began looking at this plan, especially as the consultant was saying, how do you look at these needs and begin to prioritize them? Because they're all specific needs that we need today. So this plan is really a one-phase plan for the time being. Now, will there be things that we'll have to address in the future with, you know, maintenance? Sure, we do that now. But this plan is simply a needs-based plan, long-term in particular, and I truly believe, and the committee believes, very cost-effective. So as we move on, let's go back to those critical needs, again, by building. What are those needs? Safety and security for students and staff, accessibility to all of our students, staff, and our community, and last, optimizing those educational environments. Let's begin with Anderson High School. Now, of course, this list is not all-inclusive. There are lots of areas that, but we picked out the key pieces that we would like to address in this presentation. First of all, Anderson High School, we need to address our security vestibule and entry area. We need improvements to accomplish a secure entrance at Anderson High School. And if you've, if you've ever gone into Anderson High School, you know what I mean. We open the door, you walk directly into. We do have an electronic system there where you do have to buzz in, which is a great, and we have staff that are very cautious about who is in that building and letting those in, but we need to address that security vestibule and entry area. We also need to look at ADA accessibility issues, such as elevators and entry assists for our doors and for people that are handicapped. ADA accessibility, remember I said a few minutes ago, where we have areas in our district where kids and staff, if you have a, let's just say, crutches or a wheelchair, you cannot get at Anderson. You cannot get to the second floor. You cannot get to some of the areas in the pool area, and if you are a music student, you are not able to get to some of the music classrooms. We also have some HVAC improvements, and yes, that means cooling. There are days in the fall and in the spring where at certain areas and places in that building, of course, the whole building gets extremely warm, but optimal learning environments are key. There have been days when literally it's been well over, Ray, high 90s, if not higher, in some of those classrooms. There is very little learning going on in some of those classrooms. We also need to look at our generator system and electrical service improvements at Anderson. We need to have classroom modifications, which, again, because of the heating and the ventilation and the air conditioning, all that interface, we need to improve some of our learning environments as well. We have some roofs that do need replaced at Anderson, not the entire thing, but segments of that particular roof in the near future. And a huge need at Anderson is site circulation and safety improvements. What I mean by that is simply site circulation. If you happen to be unfortunate to be driving down the highway out here at, early in the morning or in the afternoon when school lets out, you'll get yourself in quite a quagmire in regards to that, as well as the fact that we have students, parent drop-offs, bus transportation, and everything coming in and out of really one entrance in, one entrance and out, and it's just not working well. We need to address that. We also need to look at some of the safety improvements over in that area as well. So those are the critical needs at Anderson High School, as well as, again, a list of some minor needs that we will begin to address as well. We now move on to Turpin. At Turpin, again, the door and vestibule for security purposes, very similar to Anderson, that you have one main entrance for most of the students and staff, as well as parents and any other visitors that come in there, and this, these particular doors do not have an electronic entry, but we do have staff positioned there during the day. We also need to secure that public entrance, to have a, to have a secure public entrance. ADA accessibility and entry assists as well. There are places in Turpin as well that students have difficulty getting. In fact, we just recently had to move a locker room so that we could have our coaches and our students be able to actually go to a locker room that play on one of our athletic teams. So with that, as moving on, HVAC efficiency improvements. Turpin is air-conditioned, but we know that with some improvements, that we can have even greater efficiencies there. Turpin is our only building, that's not Energy Star rated of our building. So the envelopes are in great shape, but we need to work on the efficiencies at Turpin as well. And at Turpin, especially board members you knew and know and quite frankly commented upon this, and Jim, I'll use his comments, Jim has been a parent at Turpin for years and years, and he's been at Turpin like many of us, but until you really go in with a different lens to look at Turpin and you realize, oh my gosh, the learning environments. We have some nice-sized classrooms parked right next to a pie-shaped classroom, where once the students get in, it's very difficult to get them back out, so, especially if you're in the front. We also have classrooms at Turpin where you literally have to walk through a classroom to get to another classroom. We have ADA issues, or not issues, but concerns, where quite frankly, you wouldn't want to take your skateboard down one of those ramps because you would get quite a lot of speed going down. So we do have some of those things to begin to address as well. But, so we do have some significant classroom modifications, and also, we need to work on some of our student circulations in that building, and we can do that. We really truly believe we can do that. So Turpin, those are our needs at Turpin. Nagel Middle School. Nagel's our newest building, but when we say newest, it still has a little bit of age on it. And there are some areas that we need to address at Nagel. Number one is our door access control and improvement, again, in regards to the security at Nagel. ADA accessibility, entry assists, again, at Nagel. And again, similar to Turpin, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, chiller efficiencies that we know we can, and we've worked on that already, but we know we can make some more improvements for some energy improvements that will be cost-effective and pay for themselves down the road. Just takes a little money to do that. One of the issues at Nagel is site access. One of the issues at Nagel is site access, very similar. If you're at Nagel and you try to get in in the morning, or you're trying to get out in the afternoon, you could be there awhile. The access in regards to parents picking and dropping off kids, they're double and triple parked sometimes. We also have, although we've worked really hard at resolving that and it's flowing better, it still has some issues that we need to take a look at, and so we need to look at some site access and looking at some improvements there at Nagel as well. Now, we move to our elementaries. Air Elementary. Air Elementary and Sherwood are, well, they're identical, so when you see this, well, kind of when we get to Sherwood. Two very nice buildings, but kind of an open classroom, both of those buildings are open classrooms. We've done an excellent job with the envelopes there, but we do need to address our security vestibule improvements in both of those buildings as well, Air Elementary. We need fire alarm improvements. ADA accessibility, again, that entry assist and ADA modifications like in some of the restroom areas at Air. And simply some interior renovations there. I mean, we have carpeted, a whole carpeted area that needs replaced. We need to look at some of those dividers and doing some things there and simply some interior renovations. We have the kivas at both Air and Sherwood. Kivas are great, it was a nice design at the time, which basically was instead of a riser type thing where you, you know, you see in some buildings where you have little risers for kids to sit on and you can do a presentation or whatever, these kind of go the opposite directions, they go down. Okay? So, your presenter is maybe down lower and kind of looks up at the kids, which is nice, but there's definitely a safety issue of people falling and slipping into those kivas. All right. And again, in our elementaries, although we've done a wonderful job recently with our middle school and high school in regards to some technology infrastructures, and there's some minor modifications we still need to do there, but our next set is the elementary schools, to make sure that they have the same wireless capabilities and capacities as our middle and high schools. So, we need to address technology infrastructure at Air Elementary. At Maddox. At Maddox, Maddox is a building that has a great, I said, an envelope at Maddox, very, very solid building, but again, the same issues here with regards to door access and security improvements. ADA accessibility and modifications. HVAC improvements and cooling. Maddox is a building that is not air-conditioned, little parts of it is, and again, Maddox is a building where it can get very, very warm for our students. As well as, we currently have a modular at Maddox that has two classrooms, and we desperately would like to get rid of that modular, and we're looking at a small addition of two classrooms to eliminate the modular classrooms and get rid of that house trailer, or get rid of the trailer there. As well as some scheduled roof replacements, site access improvements. Again, unless you are a Maddox person, a parent, a staff member, or you're visiting, there are times when school bus and cars have a very difficult time accessing the building at the same time, especially in the mornings and the afternoons. The driveway is narrow, it needs to be retrofitted, and we need to do some site access improvements for some additional parking there as well. And again, the technology infrastructure at our elementaries. Mercer. Mercer Elementary, probably the biggest issue with Mercer, it's the largest elementary, by the way. It's also a pre-K building as well as Summit, so it has our preschoolers there as well. But at Mercer Elementary, the security vestibule and lobby modifications. When you walk into the front doors there, you walk into a, and you can see that on the second picture there, it's kind of, that's looking right in. You can see that the nice, beautiful staircase that goes up and then you can go down and you can turn left and you can turn right, and the office is down there to the right. So, once you maintain access into Mercer Elementary, which is secure, which they do a wonderful job with the electronic system there, but it's still something that we need to address. Window replacement. Window replacement, Mercer, there are some needs at several of our buildings for some small projects as far as windows. Mercer's the largest. We need to address the windows there, we have many single-pane windows. Again, once those are replaced, our efficiencies will improve. ADA accessibility, I did not realize this. I'm not on crutches, I'm not in a wheelchair, and when I go to the gym, I don't realize that. There are about six or seven steps or more that you need to go down to get into the gym. So, not accessible as well. Although Ray's done a nice job in his department, they put a lift elevator in one of the wings back there to get kids up to the second floor, and it was kind of an art to look how they did that, which was really nice, but it still needs some ADA accessibility provisions. Roof replacements are scheduled within the very near future. Interior renovations. As we discovered last year with the fire that we had back there, that we did some of the work, and there's more renovations that need to be done with regards to some of those movable classroom walls that are no longer movable and those types of things. And again, some technology infrastructure needs at our elementaries. Moving on. Sherwood, again, won't spend a lot of time on Sherwood, it's the identical to Air, although it is a couple of years older, but built on the same pattern. Fire line improvements, ADA accessibility, interior renovations, technology, and of course, your security vestibule areas at Sherwood. Summit. Summit, again, as I said, is a pre-K six building. Our needs at Summit revolve around our door access and security again, and the lobby modifications at Summit. ADA accessibility, elevator and entry assist, again, Summit is a building where there are issues in getting children and staff to the second floor. Some window replacements at Summit, HVAC improvements, cooling again, and technology Wilson Elementary. Wilson Elementary, quite frankly, the big bullet right there, right under the word Wilson Elementary says building replacement. Wilson School serves approximately 700 students. To address the safety, security for all the students and staff there, and again, Wilson Elementary has three modular units or six classrooms that are outside the envelope of the building. It also has a gym that's outside the envelope of the building, kids have to go outside to go to the gym. Accessibility for all. And optimize educational environments. Remember I said at Turpin where you have to walk through one classroom to get to the other? That's kind of a way of life at Wilson Elementary, is walking through many classrooms to get to wherever you need to go. In fact, we've enclosed some, used to be open hallways, now we enclose them to hallways and now they are classrooms at Wilson. Why replace Wilson? Why not just renovate it? Why not just come in and, you know, kind of a real clean sweep and just, you know, fix it? Well, there's a real reason why not. And I can go back several years ago when the Ohio School Facilities Commission did their first report to the district that said the cost to renovate Wilson at that time was, I believe, 93% of the cost of building a new one. You'd have to put 90, is that correct, Ray? 93% of the cost, so every 93 cents out of the dollar, you'd only, that didn't make sense at that time, and that was several years ago. I would say the cost of renovating today would far exceed the cost of building a new facility, a 700-student facility. Okay, that's our building tour. And now, in summary, what are we recommending? In summary, this is a comprehensive plan, although I just highlighted some large points of it. This comprehensive facilities plan proposes that the Forest Hills Local School complete all of those identified critical needs all at one time in the very near future, or in the immediate short term, we'll say, rather than spreading these projects out over years and years and years, to an estimated cost of approximately $45 million. $45 million, sounds like a hefty price tag, but let me just, I just saw today, and I wanted to double-check it, there was a high school that was renovated and large sections new placed on it in our vicinity, and that's Walnut Hills in the city of Cincinnati. Walnut Hills was proud at the reopening of that building this year, this fall. The price tag to renovate and add new to Walnut Hills High School, one building, was $67 million. Than saying, let's start from scratch and take a 40-plus-year-old building and totally renovate it and totally, you know, maybe a new. But we do have one building, we have to do that, and that's at Wilson.
In fairness, when I toured the buildings, I saw air conditioning as a security issue too, particularly at Anderson. What they do, they keep closing the doors, but somebody keeps opening them so that you get a little cross breeze going on. And if there's air conditioning, you don't have the same need to do that. You can't monitor those doors all day, every day the kids are in school. Who knows when they're blocking them open again? I'd rather see the air conditioning and see the students.
The short and solid answer is we're getting a full, additionally useful life out of these buildings.
Yes.
That is the answer, and you know, that was a, as I said, this plan may be, in fact, it is, different than many other plans that the board may have looked at or addressed in the past, because in the past is when we might need to address this building this year, and five or six years, well, we have another building that's getting 40 or 50 years old, we'll need to address that one. We're saying that if we address these all at once, because the envelopes are in very, very good condition, that we'll be able to get another useful life of these buildings for at least a generation and more. And I think that's key. We would not be going back to our community for anything of substance for bond for a long time.
I want to, Rick mentioned something I want to point out to make sure our community understands. We cannot use bond money on operating expenses legally, you just can't do that. And so, that's why we're talking about basically two different things. Now, there's some flexibility of PI money, but, so there's no option for us to take any bond money that we'd have and use it in operating. That's why we're looking at a completely, we're looking at a different revenue source. The other thing I want to point out, because we talk about some of the, I think you said, gleaming, school buildings that we see, especially in rural areas and quite frankly, in urban areas. We are number 587 out of 614 school districts on the Ohio School Foundation Commission list. We're never going to see any of that money, and if we did, it would cost us more to use their money to follow their requirements than we spend anyway. So, the thought, I hear it all the time, people saying, well, why do I see all these, you know, really nice elementary and all these other buildings in places? And it's because they're funded by the Ohio School Foundation, and we're not going to see that. Marymont chose to do a 10-mil levy over there, and that's why they've got some new buildings, or at least some renovated buildings. We're not looking at anything like a 10-mil levy.
And that being, the fund you were talking about is the reason why you see schools in rural areas tearing down their buildings that are newer than ours to put up newer buildings.
Right.
And, because I asked that at the Capitol Conference too, and it turns out, it's just not happening. It's the way it's set up, is that, you know, our district, we have some of the oldest buildings, certainly as a district, as many districts, if not the majority of them in the state, but yet, we're still 580 out of 600. So, the way it's staffed, we never move up the ladder. For me, the, I mean, the, you know, I love hearing the fact that basically we're getting a new lease on life for all of our buildings. The safety and security modifications, I mean, even before recent events, you know, the buildings, when you build a building, 40 years ago, I believe the major concern was fire, it's getting people out. So, you know, at Wilson, there's 30 entrances and exits, I mean, there's numbers all over the place. And that's great to get people out, but it's also makes security extremely difficult. And I see that in all of our buildings, and that, you know, seeing that as the first thing on there, you know, and when we tour the buildings about, just, I mean, just little things about access around and not having that, you know, an eye on the door type things is, I think, paramount. So, you know, we get to questions, $45 million, what does that entail as far as a bond issue? As far as millage goes?
I can let Rick address that a little bit. We have some estimates, but what we would need to do is to go to our county auditor and ask them to parallel the fact of what would a $45 million ask associated, be associated with a millage. Rick?
Yeah, I mean, just think, it's kind of the opposite from an operating levy. An operating levy, we ask for a millage to the county auditor, and the county auditor comes back and says that millage will generate X dollars. In this case, it's project-based, so it's, the project cost is X, and what would that millage be? And obviously, there's some variables in there in term, obviously, and interest rates and things like that, but, you know, currently, you know, a mil is about $26 million with a capital mil, you know, mostly in long-term, you know, capital side of that. So, obviously, this number would be, you know, above one and a half, but 1.6, I mean, we, you know, obviously, we'll get that information, you know, based on the board's, you know, passing a resolution. So, really, the next step to find out what that millage is, is we would have to bring a resolution of necessity to the board with a dollar amount. So, one or more resolutions to the board with a dollar amount that we will then, once passed, send to Hanwha County, Dusty Roads, and they will tell us what that millage is, and then we bring that back to the board.
Do we have to take formal action to ask you to do that?
You can.
Okay, so we can ask you to go look, go find out the millage for a 40 or a 45 or both?
No, no, you'll have to bring the formal resolutions at a future meeting to the board that they would have to pass. So, it is a, well, I guess what I'm saying, today, you could ask me to, you know,
Prepare the paperwork.
Prepare the paperwork, and I'll bring that at the next meeting, but there'll be a formal resolution that's required to move forward anywhere.
Could we, could we have you prepare the paperwork at maybe several different amounts?
Absolutely. I mean, if the board, you know, looked at, you know, 45 million, 50 million, 35 million, you know, those are all, obviously, there'll be a resolution for each one of those, and...
Gives us a little more time to study.
Absolutely.
Study the paperwork and talk to Joe if we want.
You could bring a 40, a 45 and a 50 to us to then authorize one or all of them?
Correct. And that paperwork would then be signed, and we would send that to the county, and within, you know, a week, two weeks, we would get that millage back formally, and then at another board meeting, we would present that, and then the board could decide to take the next step, which is a resolution to proceed, and obviously, you know, timing, it really just depends on, you know, where the, where the issue is that the board would target.
That's my next question, is do you, do we have a timeline in mind?
Well, if the board were to say or to share with us that, you know, we do have these needs, there are critical needs, that we need to address them sooner than later, the next opportunity to be on the ballot would be in May of 2013. May of 2013, we would have to have everything signed, sealed and delivered and completed to the Board of Elections by the first week of February. So, then you'd have to back up from there. So, then you'd have to do a resolution of necessity, like Rick was saying, and then after that, about two weeks after that, you'd have to do a resolution to proceed, then that would give Rick an opportunity to then take that to the Board of Elections.
Do we have to do anything formally before the next board meeting? I get the next regularly scheduled meeting.
I can prepare whatever you ask me to prepare, but I don't need, I don't have anything prepared, obviously, we wanted this discussion, so there's nothing to act on tonight.
The resolutions, we could do- The resolutions we could deal with at the organizational meeting.
Oh, that's right, I forgot about that.
And then that would still give us time to take action at the first full regular meeting in January.
So we ought to ask Rick to prepare some paperwork for us to consider. Randy mentioned 40, 45, and 50. I was thinking 43, 45, and 47.
About, no, I'm just kidding.
I don't, doesn't matter that much.
Well, I think, if the, we won't go into the ifs and thens, I like Jim's suggestion, because a 40, a 45, and a 50, a 40 would, I would, we would have to take a sharp pencil to what of these particular needs would maybe not be a priority.
I just threw that out.
Yeah, just numbers. But, but again, as I said, Joe does this, and a fine job of doing that, and these are very good estimates, but at the same time, we're still at this 10,000-foot level, so...
Yeah, my thought process was, just based on the work I know has already been done, 40's likely too low, 50 might be a little bit high. I think 43, 45, 47's a tighter...
Agreement?
Yep.
Why don't we do that? Now, we know, there's no crazy voting changes anticipated this year. I know last year, we had maybe March, maybe how?
No.
May or August.
Yeah, the actual, just to give the exact dates, it's May 7th is the actual, well, February 5, May 7, August 6, and November 5. But for the May 7, 2013 issue, as Dallas said, the actual second date where paperwork would have to be, two resolutions, a resolution of necessity and a resolution to proceed, delivered to the Board of Elections, would be February 6. So prior to that, and hand-delivered to them, if the May 7 issue would be desired.
I want to go back to your, the overall design, because as I said, this is huge, and we've got to make sure we're comfortable with what we're looking at, and make sure the community will be comfortable with it. This board is, the district's been paralyzed for 15 years over non-related agenda issues, and I applaud finally getting, putting a stake in the ground so that we can move forward. But you did recommend a change in the design of, let's just say, K through 8. Tell me more about your comfort level, because we see all these other different designs, and I'm not saying we should change, because let's face it, we've seen some designs that didn't work out, and I don't want to, you know, follow that out the window. But could you, because this is something we're going to be, we're going to live with for at least the next generation, if not farther.
We, as a steering committee, looked at the research that had been done in the past in regards to maybe different design of our facilities, as far as the makeup of the facilities. The facilities themselves were, it was of interest to us. It wasn't necessarily what those facilities entailed, although we really strongly believe that our community would not necessarily be very supportive of making some significant changes. So what am I saying there? And in regards to the fact that unless we were looking at some major redistricting, some major shifting in how we were to put students into our buildings, we still are looking at the same envelope of nine buildings, okay? So we, that was the first premise. The second premise that we did take a little bit of a hard look at was the fact of, okay, you know, there might be some merit with a possible preschool/kindergarten facility wing, or whatever that might be. For it's some educational value, however, our preschool is only located in two of our facilities now, so putting it together, would there be some benefits of that? Sure. But at the same time, we did an informal poll, at least a couple of our, one of our committee members did, and where we thought as a committee that we might get some quasi-support for something like that, the polling came back, our community didn't show a huge interest in doing that. Now, was it a formalized poll? No. Well, it was just talking and getting some feedback from some current preschools, some people that had kids that in the next couple of years would be in preschool or in kindergarten. So our thought was simply, we do very well with what we do. We have, for a very long, significant period of time, now there have been some changes in the past, but for quite a significant amount of years, been very successful in a pre-K, K, pre-K, K through 6th grade facility, and a middle school and two high schools. You know, again, we did look at a couple of those other plans, but sort of dismissed the fact that, you know, if we were to do anything with the changing of configuration, we'd have to do some significant renovations.
Another question, education delivery hasn't changed much in 50 years, so we've been told, and it's likely it's going to change dramatically in the next five years or so. Do you have the flexibility built in? When we did the tours, I was appalled at the online learning, if you want to call it, facility that we had. Do we have the flexibility built in to adjust to whatever's going to happen over the next five years, whether it's education delivery design, or because of cost, or whatever the state may do to us?
Yes. With that said, as I said, our middle school and high schools now are wireless in regards to the connectivity there for our students, and any classroom, any area on those campuses outside the parking lots, they can still connect. We still have some work to do at the elementary's level, which are addressed in this plan. But as we look forward, at least in the significant near-ish future, we'll say three to five years, we would be looking at probably more types of online learning and teaching for our teachers using technology. We believe that we can adapt with our current facilities with that aspect of that.
Sort of want to echo something that Randy said. For us, those of us who have been on the board a while, we've gone through many discussions about facilities, and what personally I've always wanted in any discussion at the committee level was for this board to have a discussion. We've never really had a good, meaningful discussion as a school board. We had a couple of plans that were sort of brought to us, and then we'd either take it to the community, or we would just stop at some point. And there was Vision 2010, there was a facilities committee after that, there was the most recent facilities committee before this one, that had sort of a bolder, bolder options, I'd say. We learned a lot from that facilities committee. Two things we learned for sure are, well, one, loud and clear, was we like the way, we, the community, like the way our schools are to a large extent, the configuration especially. Then the economy hit, which hit us all and made us all think in different ways, more creative ways to do things. We've all had to change our personal lives, and we had to change how we look at this school district. Our community supported us very soundly in the last operating levy, which says a lot for their confidence in what we're doing and how we're doing it. So I'm just really happy we're having this discussion, everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
I think the plan is sound. I think from a timing standpoint, we all know, well, we've been told, money's never going to be cheaper, construction's never going to go, it's not going to be less than what it is today, especially when there are companies that are looking for work. So the timing is good. I'll be honest with you, I have a concern over what's going on in Washington, and if our president and Congress are not able to agree, I think it would be tough to go out and ask for anything incremental if our community's going to get hit with big tax increases from another angle. But hopefully, if that gets worked out, the timing is good from a fiscal responsibility standpoint, to be good stewards of the buildings that we have. We've been very lucky over the past, whatever it is, 20, 25 years, to not have to pay incremental money in the form of a PI, property tax. So pay me now or pay me more later, and now's probably the time.
I really like this plan for, I think, the four reasons Dallas mentioned here. When we toured the buildings in June, which I think we all did, and Randy asked this question, "How did you know what these needs were?" Going into those buildings, to me at least, they're very obvious.
It was an aha moment. And you said it wasn't, it was for me.
No, I mean, I mean, you see the safety and security, and you see just the simple, wait a minute, how does a kid get up to those music classrooms? Well, they don't, you know, or someone carries them, or we move the class to them, and so that was just like, wow, and the security, like Jim hit with keeping doors propped open, having kids, you know, instead of interrupting the class, they go on the outside of the building, and there were some security things, you know, especially having kids in the building currently, that I'm like, whoa, we can't, you know, have this going on. And then the same, you know, the learning environments, the air conditioning, a lot of people, I've had this debate so many times with people, but you have to think about, you know, allergies and asthma and the kids, and the learning's not happening as a teacher, you know, it's just, when those buildings are, you know, those classrooms are over 90 degrees, and you're trying to have them to take an hour-long test, they're not going to do their best performance. We need to give them the environment so that they can succeed, and that was your vision for this committee. So those top three for me, and then obviously, going into Wilson, you can see it there too. So I'm very excited about this plan and support it wholeheartedly, so.
Yeah, Wilson was dramatic. I mean, that was a Southern California design school, and, you know, in the Midwest, that I always, before we took the tour, I thought, oh, we can rehab that, yeah. No, if you go in there, there's absolutely no question, that's got to be replaced.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I've given Rick some work to do, and we'll move on to the reports to the Board of Education. So the Forest Hills Foundation report.
Dee, I was not at the last meeting, and I understand that you are prepared to give a short report tonight, is that okay? Thank you. We have our executive director of Forest Hills Foundation to give the report.
Good evening. I'll keep it brief. First thing, we were very excited, our new board president was there to lead us. Our new board president is Forrest Heiss, the other Forrest Heiss. Forrest Heiss, who served on this school board for, I think, I believe it was 33 years. So he is the new president of the foundation, and we're very excited to have him. Secondly, we hired a fundraising consultant. It's someone from the community, actually, Smith, Yonker, Jim Yonker is going to, we have hired him to come in and kind of do assessment for us, where we are, what we need to do as far as fundraising. He has done this throughout the country, very knowledgeable, and so we're excited to have him. We also adopted a memorandum of understanding for setting up scholarships in situations where a teacher passes away or something, if someone wants to set up a scholarship, we now have something in place so that people can come to us to make that happen. Our alumni groups are moving forward, both Anderson and Turpin. We're kind of hit a little snag at Turpin, we're looking for someone to lead that, but I'm sure someone will step forward. At Anderson, we do have some people in place to lead that, and they are looking at doing an all-class reunion this summer. So that is in the planning stages now, more information will follow on that. And as far as events, we have two events coming up. One is our Day for Days Woman, which is February 23 at Nagel Middle School. It's a all-day girls' day-out event. It's very, very fun. The registration for that will open on end of December. And our fourth annual alumni basketball game is set for March 2. It's the Turpin versus Anderson alumni. This year will take place at Turpin. And finally, our redesigned website is up and running that we're very excited about. Yes, finally. And so people can go on that, please do, take a look at it, it's www.fhfe.org. It's new, a lot of new features, and you can contact us through that website. So that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did notice the website and was very excited to see everything up to date, and just, yeah, being able to scroll through and see things, so nice job.
All right, Legislative Liaison Report. Randy?
Most significant thing that happened was both the House and Senate passed House Bill 555, which is the education bill that has been in the news and the paper here recently. The governor signed that into law. Just the top line, this bill will impact our district because it changes the way school districts are rated. There will be an A-through-F rating. This won't go into effect until 2014, 2015. Part of what came along with that is they are upping the proficiency requirements, and I heard it described as more of a bell-shaped curve, because I think they were trying to push down, more schools were becoming excellent and excellent with distinction, and there's a effort to try and push some of that back down. The good news is, they came out with this new rating, but didn't tell school districts, you know, here were the rules for this year. So they're going to try and apply the new grading to our old system, and so that has been pushed off to make it a little bit fairer. One of the things that the bill includes is they're calling it a dashboard. It's a series of measures that anybody can go online and take a look at, and again, it's intended to give a more comprehensive view of how school districts are really doing, rather than just one overall rating. I spoke with Representative Stauberg this afternoon to get a briefing from him in preparation for this, and he said, "This has been like drinking from a fire hose." All the information that's come out on, in the education arena, and all the last-minute changes that took place. But Dallas, is there anything else you would want to add to this?
It's a pretty comprehensive bill. The one thing that I think for us, that they postponed the overall ratings of schools until the year 2014, 15, to coincide with the implementation of the new district-state report cards. However, even this year, I believe, Randy, this year, the dashboard, they'll still begin to rank ABCs, Ds, and Fs on some of the dashboards, and it'll begin to increase all the way up through until the district ranking. Now, this year, from this bill, there will not be this, an excellent with distinction or excellence or effective districts for this current 2012, 13 school year. So it'll just be that, beginning to look at the dashboard. Same criteria, dashboard, letter grades, but not an overall compilation of letter grades until 14, 15, when the new assessments and everything comes about.
This is a transition year, so you know, fasten your seatbelts to see what's really going to come out of this.
Thank you.
That's all.
Okay, thank you.
I move that we go into executive session to prepare for, conduct, or review collective bargaining strategy.
Second.
Mr. Stauber?
This is Bissinger.
Yes.
Mr. Fruman.
Yes.
This is Hugner.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Dr. Heiss.
Yes. I'd like to thank everybody for coming. We do not anticipate any actionable items after the executive session, and our next meeting is on January 4, our budget hearing organizational meeting at 7:00 AM. It is incorrect on the schedule, it is at 7:00 AM. We eagerly anticipate everyone being there. And then we have another meeting, our regular meeting is then later in January. Well, presumably, we'll do that at the organizational meeting. Thank you for coming.